One.
Good evening and welcome to the December 20th, 2021 Affordable Housing Trust Board of Trustees Meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let me know. Okay, pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16th, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, until April 1st, 2022. This meeting of the Chatham Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees is being conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410 and the conference ID is 344606029 pound. Or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Well, this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We'll post a record of this meeting on a town's website soon as possible. Thank you, everyone, for joining. Let me get a couple of housekeeping things out of the way. First of all, if you're not a trustee, and please mute your mic and turn off your camera. And let's start with a roll call. And I'll start with this. Sure, our, excuse me, this is a trustee, trustee he, Shereen Davis.
Present.
Trustee Cory Metters.
Present.
Trustee Dean DeCastro.
Present.
Trustee Jeffrey Dykens.
Present.
Trustee Bruce Bean.
Present.
And trustee Megan Story.
Present.
Okay, let's just go over quickly what our agenda. We'll have public comments and I'd make a couple of comments here. Any of the public, you have basically the same information I do. I'd like to have you speak if you have any comments on anything on the agenda upfront. Then we'll get into our COVID-19 Emergency Rental Assistance Update. And then we'll get into a working session with the trustees on town-owned parcels, potential zoning amendments and policy decisions. And then we'll go into an executive session and not come back to the public meeting. Let's see, we'll start with, do we have any public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. I'll turn it over to Katie and Ally.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the trust. So tonight, we wanted to actually, so we'll start with the COVID-19 Emergency Rental Assistance Update. If you'll recall, just back just over a year ago, the trust voted to allocate $150,000 into a COVID-19 Emergency Rental Assistance Fund. Town staff went out to bid on for a service agency to administer that emergency rental assistance program and we had contracted with the Housing Assistance Corporation in Hyannis. And so this is a final update to all of the trust members that after a one-year contract with HAC, they serviced 21 families from the town of Chatham and allocated through other funds, not the $150,000. It was approximately just under $140,000 that the, through other funds, other emergency rental assistance funds that were utilized to help the 21 Chatham families. So since other funds were available, no funds from the Chatham Relief Fund were necessary. And so the $150,000 that was originally allocated is no longer earmarked for that purpose and is now available in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund balance. So we just wanted to give that update. We did have a conversation with HAC to make sure that those other funds are still available for families, the other emergency rental assistance funds, and those opportunities are still there for Chatham families if needed. So we wanted to give that final update to the board. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Peter, Shereen has her hand up.
Yeah, I had my, I was on mute. I apologize. Okay, Shereen.
I don't have any questions, Katie, but I just wanted to comment that we weren't too far off the mark on what the need was as far as the funding is concerned. I think that was a good assessment from everybody, even though it was like a stab in the dark. The one thing that I have to say is HAC has done some pretty aggressive outreach over the course of COVID and they have some solid programs. So I'm really pleased that we went in the direction of HAC and, you know, hey, they didn't need the funds and that's fine, as long as the families were serviced in the community. So thanks for tracking that, Katie and Ally.
No, no problem. And we did provide the final reports to the board and they're available on the website as well. Just, you know, for the public's information as well. So that is that item.
That's great. No, thank you. And that's, I remember when we were doing that, we kind of could not decide on what kind of a number we wanted. And you're right, Shereen, we kind of pulled that out and it worked out fine. It's interesting how many families were taken care of and how HAC could handle that. So go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's all we have on that item unless there's any further questions, we can move on to the next agenda item.
Okay.
Great. All right. So would you like me to go ahead, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please do. You know, you reminded me as you're starting. Let me ask you all. I was thinking that Katie could kind of cover all the areas first, just generally, and then we could go back individually, although I pushed back that said we could do them individually. I don't know. Is there any preference among trustees on how you'd like to do this?
Flexible.
Good. How about you, Katie, since you're front in this?
So actually, when Ally and I discussed this earlier today, we had that same, you know, that same conversation. Did we want to take each item individually? Or even if we go through, how about if we were to talk about potential town-owned parcels that we could look at and then perhaps have further conversation? And then, you know, perhaps take all of the zoning and then all of the policy decisions. That may be a beneficial way to go. So, and just to start in on this, you know, I think that, you know, we certainly have provided you a lot of options and information to think about moving forward. And so that, you know, we certainly hope that if we can come away with some decisions tonight, that's great. But we fully expect that we would have another meeting probably in early January after you've all had some time to digest this and have, you know, think about it some more. If you have questions tonight, if there are questions that can't be answered on a certain item, we just thought it would be a good way to start off the conversation. So just so that everybody's aware, we're still waiting to hear on the three pieces of legislation that were filed. Last, we knew they were still in committee, two in the Housing Committee and one in the Joint Committee on Revenue. And so we don't have any further information on those yet. But, and again, as we're waiting, you know, to work on other items, you know, such as the, you know, the 1533 and 0 Main Street, you know, closing on that property and then getting started. We think that there are a lot of other things that we could be doing. And we're just looking for your guidance tonight. So if it's okay with you, we can just start with that, you know, with a conversation and go from there.
Sure, that's great.
Okay, so I think Ally's going to share her screen when we start to talk about the parcels. So here's the first one we'll talk about tonight that you're all familiar with is the Middle Road parcel. And this was something that we had brought to town meeting to potentially discuss about whether or not. And town meeting did not vote in favor to declare the parcel surplus. And most recently, the Open Space Committee has voted to recommend to the Select Board that the entire 19-acre parcel be protected by a conservation restriction. And so, you know, just from our staff perspective, we just want to see, and again, we're not necessarily asking you to make decisions tonight, but we're just looking for direction if we should continue to pursue this parcel or if we should look to other items at this point in time and just looking for direction in that regard. So again, I think that we had hoped that at a point in time, there could be perhaps a compromise and maybe a portion of the property utilized for housing and a portion of the property protected by a conservation restriction. But again, we just wanted to bring that to the trust's attention to let you know that that was recently voted by the Open Space Committee. So we would be looking for a little, you know, some further guidance on that parcel itself. And then the next parcel, again, I'll go through all of these and then we can come back and have further conversation. So again, and I think this was brought up to the Select Board recently about perhaps looking at the parcel of land that was suggested for a COA on Stepping Stones Road to see whether or not that property would be useful or a decent property to look at for housing purposes. Again, you know, we think that it has some development potential and we are, you know, just looking for some guidance moving forward if this is something that we should potentially pursue. Let's see. So that is that parcel. The next one, again, the board and I think everybody's very familiar with the property at 127 Old Harbor Road. And if you'll recall, there was a citizen's petition to declare the property surplus to be used for housing. And I believe that the determination that was made by town council was that it was improperly before town meeting because it wasn't, because the Select Board did not vote to declare the property surplus. So without that vote, town meeting could not advance the vote that was petitioned. However, I think that there was some, you know, there was a vote taken to give guidance to the to the town that people would like to see it utilized for housing. And so after town meeting, at a Select Board meeting, there was some conversation about what would it take to to renovate the property to be, you know, potentially be used for housing. And so staff actually applied for a couple of grants, but were not successful in either of those. One was through the state's community one-stop-for-growth grant application. And the other was through Mass Development, a real estate services grant. So staff would be looking for guidance tonight on potentially, if it were to be used for affordable housing, we could potentially use trust funds to go out and seek, you know, perhaps an architect or an engineer to come in and look at the property and see how it could be yet best utilized for housing if everybody would be in favor of that. If it were to be utilized for attainable housing, we would need to look for another funding source. So just that's the background on that property. And again, we'll come back to each of these and have further discussion. I know that there is also a recent, we've recently forwarded you some information from town council. So again, you know, further discussion needs to be had on that parcel as well in that regard. Another parcel that we thought would be beneficial to at least explore is the Marconi property. There is, as we know, when we were looking at locations for the council on aging, there is definitely some land area on that property that could be developed. And so we just wanted to bring that to your attention and to see whether or not there was any appetite for us to move forward with looking at that parcel for affordable and attainable housing as well. And I think actually that is all, those are the parcels that we would be looking at for guidance tonight. And so I think we could, if we could open that up for discussion and feedback, that would be beneficial, I believe.
Sure. The firsthand I see is Cory, then Shereen and Jeff and Dean. And I have a couple of comments. We have Bruce. Everybody wants to speak, so that's good. Let me, I have, well, I'll wait till everybody else. I have certain concerns and questions. All right, Shereen. You're on you.
Cory was first.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cory.
Okay, no. All right. I'm assuming we're just going to kind of give some brief general comments and not really dig into the nuts and bolts too, too deep right now. So just some initial thoughts on these four parcels. First, Middle Road. Personally, I don't want to give up on that. I do think it has some merit for housing. More in line with, you know, something within the neighborhood that would fit into the neighborhood aesthetically. But I do think there's, this still holds a valuable asset to the town for some element of affordable housing. I completely respect the, you know, concept of putting a deed restriction for conservation. I understand where the supporters of that are coming from. And maybe there's a compromise discussion down the road. If that ever does come into play, I would only want to have a discussion with staff and to get, for some clarity on a couple of points. One, if there's any other parcel in the town that we are considering using for any reason and we put this conservation restriction in, how would that play out if we wanted to use it as part of that credit? So I just want to see if we, if we put a conservation restriction in it, before we do it, try to get the best bang for our buck in that conversation. So there's obviously a lot of input we'd be looking for from the public with that. So, but as far as affordable housing units, I personally still am in favor of looking at least some of that for some units. Stepping Stone, you know, if it were ever to be developed.
Point of Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Or excuse me, Cory. May I suggest that we take these parcel by parcel and then, rather than, I don't mean to, I apologize for interrupting, Cory, but I seem.
I'm happy to do that. Happy to go parcel by parcel.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
All right.
So I'm good with Middle Road.
Okay, Shereen.
So as far as Middle Road is concerned, I think conversations that I've had with staff and with Jill and with the Chair of the Community Housing Partnership was that this was probably going to happen, that there was going to be a conservation restriction request. Jill had set, and Katie had set up some meetings with the organizers of that. Sort of giving them a, we met with them and sort of said, hey, you know, this is, this may be a challenge for you to do. Is there any open, you know, any room for compromise on it? And giving them the understanding that they would have an equal opposition coming their way with housing advocates at town meeting wanting to, you know, maybe turn down their conservation requests in the pursuit of community housing. So the idea to bring the group in for another conversation to see if there is room for that would be healthy. But I think what I'd like to try to do and continue pursuing is the idea of if community housing partnership is pursuing the idea of some housing there, which I'd like to see, I totally agree with Cory on, you know, an aesthetically, you know, connected sort of neighborhood concept, whether it be habitat or just something along the roadway, something downsized but fitting with the neighborhood, that the two groups try to get together before it's battled out. I think we need to take a leadership role on that to show that we are thinking about both sides of this issue and not see that there's a conflict of use involved with that. That's what I, that's my feedback on Middle Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Shereen. Jeff?
Yeah, I agree with Shereen and Cory as well that I think without some kind of compromise, there's going to be a stalemate and no one's going to get what they want. So I think it'd be wise, as Shereen just articulated, that we get together with them and try to figure out how we can share the use of the land. I think it's still good land for affordable, attainable housing. And I think we ought to strike some kind of compromise on its use. So that's what I'll say there. I think it's great land for affordable, attainable.
Thank you. Dean?
Thank you, Peter. I'm in agreement with the three previous speakers. I'm liaison to the Affordable Housing, I'm sorry, to the Open Space Committee. And I was present during that meeting and I just wanted to relate. I have had a private conversation with Shereen about this, the update or on it. The sentiment of, it was unanimous vote and the sentiment was pretty strong that they would like to see the entire parcel dedicated to conservation. They view themselves as having a particular mission. They understand that other committees have their missions and charges. There didn't seem to be, well, there was no sentiment to trying to compromise and downward to have a portion of the property restricted and a portion for housing. But as Shereen pointed out, there is a potential that they'll have, they would have to duke it out, so to speak, with those on the other side. And it's most unfortunate, I pointed out to them and they understand it anyway, that some of the same people in this town who support affordable housing also support conservation and preservation and vice versa. So it's an unusual, unusually challenging situation. But that is the background there. And I would certainly support and encourage any effort to try to get the parties together so that it doesn't go to town meeting with a, you know, big battle over this and one side's going to lose and the other side's going to prevail and there'll be a lot of unhappy people in town. So if we could exercise our role as leaders of the town to try to facilitate that, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan?
I agree with all the sentiments and I think that it's especially important for us to try to work with this group prior to any town meeting because I think that a broader open forum brings forth some people whose intentions are not necessarily true to the, in my opinion, true to the conservation and open space agenda, who sort of tag on. I think that the truly committed are part of that group now and can be talked to. And I think that that's something that, you know, and whether or not it washes out and we can do both is, you know, I don't know. But I think it needs to be dealt with before that open space where people sort of tag on to that. And unfortunately, that's not really their mission.
Thank you, Megan. I have a couple of comments. Just very quickly, I would agree with what everyone else said. I think that it's important for us, as Shereen mentioned, to get to our Community Housing Partnership in the same room with the group. I don't know when they're, I haven't seen anything of when they want to come to the Board, to the Select Board. But I do have just a couple of questions. This property sits in a butt conservation land. And how much conservation land is there that they're next to? We don't need an answer now, but that's something that they ought to consider. The reason I say that is in their discussions, as best I could tell from watching part of it anyway, they, 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 and maybe the way I say it, they downplay the affordable housing as if, you know, the Board always, our Select Board always picks on places that have trees, I guess. Or, you know, we don't go to undeveloped land, things like that. That just shows, and not a lot of, you know, they didn't be educated about what we're doing in some ways. And I understand where they're coming from. And I agree with lots of those people on the open space. And never mind that we have a whole. And never mind that we have a whole bunch of open space and conservation land through the town. But taking this to town meeting with a, with a battle is not the way to do it. If it has to be done that way, fine. I still, I believe that there's, there should be a certain amount of, of housing that could be put there. It's been on the housing production plan for how many years? Each, it's been on it for at least two production plans, I think. You know, so, so it's not as if this is something new. But in any case, all I green is conservation land, right? Is that what you're showing me?
That is correct, Peter.
I mean, you know, you see 19 areas in the brown that's covered by that, and just try to put that all around that other, this, this, what? One, two, three, four times the amount of conservation land in that 19 acres. But in any case, I, I would agree. Bruce, do you, you have anything or are you happy with what you said?
I, I think that if we, that if we can possibly come together and hammer out an agreement between the two groups on the partnership, it makes much more sense than trying to, the partnership people trying to sink the conservation designation and the conservation people trying to sink the housing idea. I think, well, I, I remember how long it took to get the community center built. And I, I don't want to see this be going through the next 12 town meetings.
Well, I'm glad I wasn't here this. Thanks. Wow. Okay. That, that good enough, Katie and Ally?
Yes, thank you. I think that we'll try to work to set up a, perhaps a joint meeting, even, you know, perhaps with the Open Space Committee and the Chatham Community Housing Partnership. And, you know, try to have a, a conversation where we can invite the advocates for both as well and, and try to have a, a conversation where we could potentially work out a compromise. Thank you for that.
Next up is what, is it stepping stone? Yeah, stepping stone. I'll start and then, then I'll be, and I'll go around. I see Corey put his hand up and then Jeff. I support it. I, I have previously, I didn't support it for the COA. I argued the fact that it's a neighborhood and, and I think for me, if I was going to, I say support it, I mean, I, I'm leaning, I would lean toward it unless somebody has some really, some real problems with it. Of course, it's a school area, but that to me should be all affordable housing, not, not attainable, affordable. You can, you know, you could put a big Habitat for Humanity area there and it would be nice, or something like that. Corey?
Well, if it were to be developed for anything, affordable housing would certainly be palatable for me, for sure. But I would put a little bit of caution in moving forward this right away for a couple of reasons. One, I do think there'd be some potential pushback from some of those if we started clearing some of this area in this, because we just cleared a whole bunch of trees across the street for the expansion of the cemetery. So I would expect some level of pushback. What exactly that is, I just would, would want to prepare for that. Also too, I'd want the school to weigh in on whether this would be part of any expansion down the road. And if I have my facts straight, also, you know, someone thought this could be part of the Montmore Regional School Agreement, which is one document, but if we were to remove this from the school, it'd be part of the lease agreement with the school, so it's, which is a separate document. So I don't want to get too mucked up and getting people confused with discussion on the regional agreement versus a lease agreement. So I'm, I'm not quick to jump on this right away. But if it were to be developed, I guess, you know, affordable housing, I said this, you know, from the beginning, that would fit into the character of the neighborhood would probably be the only sensible use that I could see for this land, aside from leaving it as is. So those is my really initial thoughts. I think there's going to be a lot on our plate potentially, and we have this land, so it's not going anywhere. So I would, I wouldn't put it on the back burner, but I wouldn't put it in first place either.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I, I think the conversation ought to be had with the schools or preliminary conversation, just kind of feeling them out. Start with our Chatham representatives. I think that as, as inappropriate as it was for a council on aging, I think it's more appropriate for affordable housing. It's a neighborhood, it's close to schools, bike trails, walking trails, downtown. I mean, it makes more sense to me as, as affordable housing. So I, I'd like to at least start a, start a conversation and gender some conversation with the schools at a minimum and think about it as a site for affordable housing. I think it has some promise. And, you know, and we, we talked about it during the conversation for, on the COA. I know, Peter, you talked about, we talked about it as a board and, you know, I, you know, I think others in town are excited about it, as we all know. So I think we start with a, you know, a conversation. And Corey's right, we shouldn't confuse it with the agreement. It is a separate agreement, the leasehold agreement. And we should, if we ever get there, that's, that's where the, the legal stuff would happen in that leasehold agreement. But I think it's worthy. I think it's, has some promise. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. Shereen?
I agree with everybody. I, but I wouldn't prioritize this. I think that we have to look at what, what potential we have, knowing what, what is in front of us for our executive session, and then also some of the other things. You know, I worry about staff capacity on, on putting together a lot. So I agree with Jeff and Corey, a conversation should start. And let's not, you know, let's not politicize this by having people get confused over the lease versus the regional agreement. So I'd put it down as a priority, but not at the top. Thank you.
Thank you, Shereen. Dean?
Thank you, Peter. That's a very good point that Shereen just made about how this thing could become politically caught up in the regional agreement changes. I have an open mind on this one. I, I think on one, in one, on one hand, it's a large enough that it would make for a potentially larger development for housing as opposed to the sort of one at a time nickel and dime approach. And I think that's what you have to do, considering how many units we have to consider building in this town or making available in this town if we're going to make a dent in, in, in the, in the problem. And at the same time, when I, I think everybody knows vigorously opposed to putting the senior center there, the residence, the residential neighborhood argument was only one of multiple arguments that I used against it. And I really do think the appropriate first step, depending on where we prioritize this, should be to ask the school committee whether they have use of this property for, for the schools. If I, several of us, I think perhaps all of us attended the school committee meetings at the time when this council on aging proposal was, was being considered. And I remember at least one member of the school committee, who's no longer on the board, but voiced the, the, the view that this, this property could be needed for future school use. So I think rather than going to the schools and saying, we want to put a, a housing there, I think the question, the threshold question should be, does the school district feel it needs this property for, for future use? And if they say yes, then there's, then there's a problem, there's a barrier. If they say no, and then I think, you know, the town could work up a proposal and, and talk, talk with them about it. I also would note, as been pointed out, Corey mentioned it, the vast number of trees. I know someone challenged the tree issue at town meeting on stepping stones by saying essentially in my, this is my characterization of it, some trees are more equal than others, that these were second, second generation trees and not worth, were not worth it. But I suspect one of the groups we're, we're going to want to talk with if we want to go forward would be the Friends of Trees and, and the conservation, some of the conservation oriented folks. So, you know, and to sum up, I think it's, I, I think it's a parcel that's worth consideration. Probably not quite at the top of the heap right now, but I want to keep an open mind about it. And we'll see where, you know, where we go with it. But I don't think that's too far different from what others have said. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Megan, and then Bruce?
So I agree that personally, I think, you know, it's sort of a double edged sword because if we don't solve the housing problem, then the schools are probably not going to need the space. And if we do, then they potentially are. But that being said, my thought on this property, aside from what's already been said, is that I would prefer very, very strongly to put more affordable and attainable housing in a different section of town. I feel like we have affordable housing in that section of town, and I'm a little nervous about putting everything in the same place. I think that it doesn't create the sense of inclusion that I would like to see with affordable and attainable housing for young families in this town. I don't want to look like we are putting them all in the same location. I, I just think that's tacky. So unfortunately, that's a big piece of property, and it happens to be right next to Bell Road and Lake Street, but, and Alkona. But that, to me, that doesn't read well.
Bruce?
I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to remember the size of it. Has anyone done a calculation of how many bedrooms it would support or units?
I, I, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, we haven't done that calculation as of yet. I think that we, I think when they were originally talking about it, it was about two and a half acres. When Ally and I parceled it off, I think we thought it was just under two.
Yeah, when I went back, oh, I'm sorry. When I went back and looked at the warrant, I think they said it was approximately two acres when they did the COA.
Okay, so just about two acres.
You know, you could maybe get eight homes.
Eight bedrooms.
Yeah. Well, you could, yeah, you could, well, it depends, yeah.
With, with sewer ring or?
Yeah, right. Okay, anything else? Okay, that sounds really, the first step obviously is to talk to the school committee or talk to the school. And then we go from there. All right, next. Is 127 Old Harbor Road. I see Dean's hands up.
Do you want me to go, Peter?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. Well, I've never favored this. And I voted against it twice at the select board, both pre and post petition. And let me first offer my recollection of what happened, and somewhat different from Katie's. The select board considered a petition, considered a warrant article on this and was voted down two to three. Then petitioners came with their petition article, so it had to go on the warrant. The recommendation from the select board was negative two to three. My understanding was that it was passed a town meeting, but not binding. That's how I understood it. And I could be, could be wrong. The, what occurred prior to, prior to the petition article, I think, because I don't recall much, if any, discussion after the town meeting at the select board. But prior to that, I think we instructed the staff to try to get a grant to do a feasibility study on the use of this parcel for affordable or attainable housing, but other, for other municipal purposes as well. So now we haven't gotten the grant. Fine. We had, there's a deed restriction on this property, as everybody knows. And we had a long opinion we received from town council this afternoon about that topic because even though he had previously opined that the restriction, in his view, had been terminated or expired after 30 years. A citizen brought a section of the general laws to my attention, section 23 of chapter 184, which contains language that says if a restriction in a deed is, is put on for a public purpose, it, it, there is no expiration. So I suggested to town manager and to Katie that they get an opinion from town council to ask whether he had considered that and how it played into his thinking. And he, he has done that today and a very long opinion. He essentially concludes that his, his, he essentially stands by his, his opinion that, that the restriction has expired, although he, he does seem to offer the suggestion that the opinion could, that, that the conclusion could be different, at least that's how I read it. He also introduces a new wrinkle about whether the placing of the restriction and the acceptance by the town constitutes a contract that leads to a charitable trust that would require action by the Attorney General. I only say all of that because it's, it seems to be a somewhat complicated situation. That being the case, I don't think that the Affordable Housing Trust is in a position to, to expend money to develop this, renovate the building or whatever for housing, would have to be affordable housing if it comes from these funds, without some further consideration at the select board by, of, of, of the, of the matter, including an evaluation of a town council's opinion. And I, I do honor town council's opinion, even when I might disagree with them, and I'm not necessarily saying I disagree with them here. But I think the most the trust could do is fund some sort of study for feasibility and cost for affordable housing so that you could bring that to the select board and say, okay, we can put one or two units there in existing buildings, or we can knock them down and put up something else. And this is what it's going to cost. And the select board could then say, okay, we think that's a good idea. We're going to vote to declare it surplus because as town council points out, it requires a, a vote of the select board to declare it surplus. And we don't know if that vote's going to be positive or negative. And then it has to go to town meeting for a two thirds vote to approve the surplus designation. So again, the, the sum and substance is, I, you know, we all just got this opinion at 4:30 this afternoon. I don't think, I suggest, I know I myself have, you know, done a preliminary look at it. I think it merits further consideration at the select board, given the select board statutory role. But I, I think for this board tonight, the, the only appropriate thing to do if we wanted to do anything would be to, to fund a study. I think we could do that anyway. Those are my comments. Sorry to be so long winded. Thank you.
Thank you. Corey?
Thank you, Peter. No, I, I'll make my comments relatively brief. My feelings on this parcel are nothing to do with affordable, attainable housing. I mean, clearly, I think this group, the entire group of us are supportive of that. My concerns on this particular parcel have been and continue to be when a family entity, you know, presents a parcel to the town and we take it, you know, under our, under our, under our stewardship, and then it expires, are we really fulfilling the, the, the true feelings of a family, any family? So I, I have some issues with, with this parcel being kind of dismissed what the intentions were, in my opinion, for, you know, not for 30 years, but beyond 30 years. The use of the school's still there, the playground is there. And if we were to dismiss this, and, you know, then legal council's gone back and forth, and we've got some new inputs in the last couple of hours that are still trying to process myself. But my concern also is, depending on how this pans out, how does that impact A, existing parcels that the town has that would fall under the same situation? Or B, future parcels that would potentially be donated to the town, knowing that in 30 years or whatever, it could be totally different than the intentions of the donor at the time. There's still a lot of stuff going on with the, with town projects. You know, we had the COA conversation with the communities. You know, we had the COA conversation with the community building. You know, you know my feeling on that right now, essentially. But I think there's just too many pieces of the puzzle that I'm not in any big hurry to, to do anything with this site. I know it's like, we've been sitting on this for decades. I, I acknowledge that. But I do think there's a couple little kinks in this as being a clean process to develop. And with some of the things that are, we, we know are on our plate and a couple of things that are, you know, we're going to discuss later, we're going to have a lot to chew on. So I, again, this is not going anywhere. It's only going to produce one or two units if we do go down that road, my opinion. And I would like to put our efforts into things that are going to have a little more bang. You know, but I'm not going to keep repeating myself. I just, I'm just, you know, my feelings were shown or expressed before. I haven't changed my opinions. I have some concerns about the deed and how we acknowledge that deed and the wishes of the family or any family on any parcel in this town. So it's, it's a slippery slope for me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Shereen?
Thanks, Peter. So I, I hear what you're saying, Corey and Dean on this. But I think of the bigger picture here. I mean, there's no reason why we can't get clarity on this deed, come to a decision as a board about this property. Look at, you know, the idea of funding a feasibility study. Perhaps it's, you know, path to ownership, like the part of the Marconi. The thing I think that we really have to start thinking about is, yes, there are certain things, Corey, that are going to have a higher priority than maybe Old Harbor Road, perhaps Stepping Stone. But I think that we really need to be aggressive about pursuing every opportunity we can right now. We don't want this community to get any more disproportionate than it is now when it comes to housing. And I think that the townspeople voted, although it was nonbinding. They did speak at town meeting in, in approval of this. And I strongly want to advocate for those two avenues to get us someplace. Clarity as a policy, whether we want to pursue this, whether, you know, and, you know, to clarify the legal opinion, I think that it's nearly going to be impossible to do. So I think it's going to have to be a, you know, a vote from us to say, yes, we're going to go this path or not. And then looking at a feasibility study of what actually would work there. I think it's a good start. And it shows the townspeople who voted, though nonbinding, that were interested in what they had to say at town meeting. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Shereen. Jeff?
Here and previous fellow select board members. The, the, the legal stuff, I think we've heard now twice from, from our legal counsel that he's pretty comfortable with, with the 30 year time period having gone by and that we can do with it what we want. I didn't plow completely through the, the missive that we got this afternoon kind of late. But I did read his conclusion and he concluded the same, with the same conclusion that he had before. So I think we've heard twice from town council and I do also abide by his, his knowledge and his recommendations. Don't always agree, but, you know, this building's been there for a long time. We've done nothing with it. And it's really not going anywhere in the words of selectmen matters. And frankly, it hasn't gone anywhere. So it's time for it to go somewhere. Now, we're either going to use it as a town or we're going, we can dedicate it to affordable housing. But to have it sit there fallow, doing nothing, is not, it's a nonperforming asset for the town. We're not doing our job as fiduciaries. So, so we really got, I, I am fully in favor of endorsing a, you know, a feasibility study to see what we could do, makes a statement. We abide by what the town meeting, the town meeting's feelings were, what their vote was, even though it was nonbinding. So you guys know where I land on this one. It's, it's, it's a piece of property that's already built. We don't have to subdivide. We don't have to, you know, we can, we can work with it. And I don't know what the reluctance is. I really don't. And so I, I'm, you know, you know where I land. And if, I'd like to know what, how much money we would need to perform a feasibility study that would result in either a single family home or a, or a two family apartment. I don't know. I'm not a developer, but we own it. We've done nothing with it. We have a dire need in this town for affordable housing. Come on. I don't understand it. And I guess I'm frustrated. And I'd like to know from the, from the experts, what we need to do a feasibility study. Because I'm going to make a motion. Thank you. As soon as I know.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Megan?
My, I agree with Mr. Dykens on this one. I am nervous that a year will go by since the last town meeting and we, as the affordable housing entity in town, will not have made any progress. Despite working hard, I mean, it's not, there's not an accusation that, that our towns employees especially are not really working on this. And I think this might be an easy place or an easier place for us to, or given my reading of the legal ruling, for us to create a start, to create something sooner than later.
Okay, thank you, Megan. I see Katie's hand up. You want, you want me to say something or you want to talk first?
Um, just, just a couple of things, if I may. So I just, I would like to clarify, just to Dean's point earlier. I do want to say that the first grant that we did apply for was about the reuse of the building. It wasn't specific to affordable or attainable housing. It was whether or not that would be the best use for the building or to actually help us provide, to provide us with some information about what a good use could be. So I just wanted to provide that background. That, that is correct. And so I wanted to provide that clarification. And to answer Jeff's question, we, the, the, both times we applied for the grants, we applied for $50,000. And so I think it was, we were thinking up to $50,000. I don't think that we, I don't think it would require that much, but that's what we were looking for. Because depending on, you know, if, if we end up needing to hire not just an architect, but perhaps a structural engineer, there may be, and, and if we, and I guess the other question is, if we want to look at just the house or the house in the barn. And so the idea was that up, we thought that the $50,000 would cover both.
Okay, I see Dean has his hand up again and.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't know if you were planning to hear your comments first. I'm happy to defer, but I wanted to make a comment relative to process.
Uh, well, then hang on in a second. Let me just make a couple of comments. Just quickly, and, and I see Jeff's hands up. This isn't, shouldn't be a decision meeting. We're going to come back for a decision meeting at another time. It's the way Kat, Katie mentioned it. But the way I feel about this property, I, first of all, I agree. We have a, we all know, we have a critical need for housing, period. We ought to, we ought to pursue every avenue that's out there. I understand that it could be an, an issue for, you know, staffing and how we handle that. But, but I, I think that, that looking at options is the first way to move. I, I think I, I, I agree that we should do an assessment to, to find out how much this is going to cost. You know, making the policy decision really is going to be, not, not that you can't do that first. I'd do that. I'd get the assessment first with the intent of, of sort of moving ahead. But it'd be nice to know how much it's going to cost us. And I'd, I'd put the barn, I'd put the, the building together. I wouldn't just forget the barn. I mean, I worked in that barn, building stuff for Marconi. But I, I think, I think that that's important. And I'll step back again, no pun intended, to Stepping Stone. That also is something that, I know you say you don't want to put it out as a priority. And I, and I would agree. It's not number one. We've got a whole bunch of things that are on our plate, but it has to be looked at. And for different, for different reasons. Everything that we have is an opportunity I think we have to pursue. Unless it's terribly, terribly, a terrible problem that we're going to get into. I, I read twice, but quickly, our town council's opinion. And the first part of it is basically what he said before, if I remember, you, you get down. The one I thought I didn't have a problem with, I just was trying to understand. The second thing, he went into a deep dive on, on a new opportunity, which turns it into a, Dean probably has a better word for it. He turns it into a, a, a contract with the town, because town, town meeting approved it. But I, I, generally, all I could think of is everything we do in that area would then become a contract with the town and we have to go to the Supreme Judicial Court to, to get that satisfied. Probably not the case, but that's the way I initially read it. So I, I'm, I'm for doing an assessment. Let's get a cost. Let's see what it's going to cost us. Otherwise, we're just, you know, we're shooting in the dark. Back to Dean, and I'm not sure whether Bruce wanted to say something first, before we get to Dean and process. I couldn't tell. Okay, Dean, and then Jeff.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Peter. You know, I threw out the idea of a feasibility and cost study because that hadn't been done before. I'm not sure if I would support it as a trustee, but I, and I understand you're not planning to take votes tonight. Or that's not your expectation, anyway. Jeff may, might offer a motion as he indicated, but I just threw that out. It seems to me that the, the, the first step that ought to occur is to put this on the, put this matter on the select board agenda. And let's have a vote up or down on whether the select board wants to declare this property surplus or not. Because if the answer is no, that's the end of it. If the answer is yes, then, then you could spend the money on a feasibility study and you can come up with, with, with the, a plan for, for, for doing, for putting the housing on, on the property. I didn't get into the substantive, substantive merits of, you know, why I don't like the idea. I'm not going to do that now, but this is largely in accordance with what Corey had said. But anyway, I just, I just think maybe the next step is, because obviously there's sharp disagreement among board members on this, and they have been on two, two previous occasions. Town meeting, yes, voted yes on it. I think that's instructive guidance. I, I listened to town meeting, but I have a statutory role as a select board member to determine whether I think this is in the best interest of the town. So it would be my suggestion that, Peter, that you put it on the select board agenda for a future meeting. We could have town council present to explain his opinion to the extent that there are any matters that require clarification, including, including the one that you mentioned that we saw today, today for the first time. Leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Well, I'm not sure we need to declare it surplus to, to get a feasibility study vote here. And I think that we can make a motion saying, I'd like to support, or I'd like to allocate $50,000 from our trust fund to do a feasibility study at 127. And then that can be dependent on the select board declaring it surplus. But we can't, we, we got to get, we got to get started somewhere. We can obfuscate this and we can push it down the road and we could kick it down the road another two or three months. We won't get anything done. You know, long it takes stuff to get done. We've been talking about affordable housing forever. And here we have a, a piece of property that could be declared surplus quite easily and turned into something that could house some people in town. That's my, that's, that's my basic gut on this one, you guys. We already own it. We own it. So we don't have to buy land. We need, we need a plan. So I'd make a motion to allocate $50,000 for a feasibility study, 127 Old Harbor Road. And then, you know, you can, you can try to blow it up at the selectmen's meeting and not declare it surplus, but pending the selectmen declaring the property surplus. You know, but we got to start some, we got to start somewhere, guys.
Hey, Jeff, up to 50?
No, up to $50,000, 50,000. I mean, that's what Katie's saying, I, you know.
Up to.
That's what we look, yeah. Thanks, guys.
Was there a second? I heard second.
Bruce second.
Bruce second? Let's see, I see Corey. Go ahead. Uh, you're on mute. Corey?
I'm sorry about that. So a clarification question. So the grant money that we were looking for was for a feasibility study of the parcel in general and what the best use of it is. And I understand that they would analyze it. If we are doing a feasibility study to, to see if we could develop it in affordable housing, I think if we, if we get through all the legal questions and philosophical questions or whatever, I think the answer is, yeah, you can. So, I, I mean, I don't want to, I, I, if, if we get through all the hurdles of, you know, like I previously spoke of, what is the feasibility study going to tell us? That's, that's my question. I want to spend 50,000. I got, I got some ideas for $50,000, which I don't know if I'm going to fall under, under policy discussions. Or if I can sneak another something in on town owned parcels that isn't listed. But I don't want to just quickly spend $50,000 because that can go a long way in other areas too. So what exactly are we, are we expecting to get out of that? That's my question.
Katie?
Thank you. So we know we can renovate the single family dwelling there. I mean, we know that that can happen. We, you know, we can look to find out how much that would cost. We could actually go to a contractor and get an estimate on that. What I think we were looking to do is to see whether or not the property could be, you know, split into potentially two smaller units, whether or not the barn would be suitable for a dwelling unit as well. And those are the types of things. I mean, we know, we, we, again, we know that we could utilize the single family home as such. But I think that what we're looking for is to find out what else we could do and what development potentials it has within the confines, confines of the existing building. Not necessarily for, you know, knocking the existing buildings down and doing, you know, new construction there. But what could be done within the existing buildings that are on the site? And that's what we would be looking for.
Okay, anyone else? I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Everybody's looking. No one says. All right, let's take a vote. Dean?
No.
Corey?
No.
Shereen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. I want to see what it's going to cost to do it. Okay. Next one is Marko. Any comments on Marconi? Shereen?
So I have a different take on this property than I do on the rest of it. And I don't want to sound contradictory in what I had said before. But I really feel that the Marconi would be a lower priority, the lowest priority, simply for the fact that there has been some of us that have been working on other pursuits of, of other interests for use of that property. Potentially, maybe it's for academic or science research. So I think at this point, I think it should, I'd like to see it as, as a low point, not being considered right now, but on the back burner. That's where I'm falling with this.
Thank you, Shereen. Dean?
Thank you. I'm in full agreement with Shereen on this. When we were considering a senior center over there a couple of years ago, it seems like 20. The, there was a lot of angst among the Marconi people. At the same time, when we had some conversation with Marconi about a scientific or educational or academic usage, there was some sympathetic response to that. So I, I agree with where, that this shouldn't, should not be, I don't, anywhere near the front burner, if at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Let's see. Jeff?
Thank you, Peter. Yeah, I agree with Shereen and Dean. I'm excited by the notion of potentially having a science campus up there or educational campus, some iteration of that. Would like to put some thought into how we're using the, the structures on Marconi. I'm not so sure the second floor of the, of the hotel building is being used for anything. I don't know why we can't do an apartment up there. I just put that on the table as an idea. They did a beautiful job on that building. It could house a couple people, family or whatever. So I'd like to put that on the table as well. But I agree, I, I, I don't think it's appropriate for affordable housing. I think we keep it, keep it in reserve for the, for the educational, the scientific pursuits that have been articulated, which I'd find very exciting. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Corey?
Basically, I'm in agreement with my colleagues who have spoken previously. You know, it's, it's not going anywhere and I hate to keep saying something like that. But it does have some conversations in the mix on other uses. So let's see where those go and, you know, take it from there, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree also. You know, I remember looking at it from COA and there were some questions about history and historic and what, what, what would better fit there in a campus for, as a campus for something other than affordable housing, especially what would fit within the Marconi Historical District. I think makes a lot of sense. The second floor in that building, by the way, I remember when we were doing that, it was up for rental, you know. I mean, the whole idea, you could make nice offices up there. And there is a back entrance to it, I think, as you know. Yeah, we should somehow use that, that second floor. I'm not sure if an apartment is the right thing to do. Yeah, it could be. Let's see. I see Megan had her hand up, I believe. Right? Yeah, go ahead, Megan. Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely agree with what was said. I, I think it would, even if you wanted to put affordable housing there, more affordable housing in that area. Again, I feel like you're going to be, it's an uphill battle and I think we're better off using it for what really it seems that its true purpose is. If there are offices up there, we should be, you know, letting people know that and renting them out though, and making some money and then putting that towards, you know, whatever we need to be putting it towards. But it'd be making the money there that we should, that we can.
Okay, yeah, that was, that was pursued. I don't know what they've done in the last few years now. Bruce?
Would it be time to have a motion to reconsider this in one year? Pending further developments?
I don't know if we need a motion for that or not. What do you think, Katie? Or, I mean, could do it. Shereen has her hand up.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think what we're deciding tonight is a binding by any means. I mean, we could have another different board of selectmen and all of a sudden, this is a priority for housing. I think what we're trying to do is not conflict with something that's already been sort of discussed and being looked at. But I'd be open to keeping it on the back burner. And if it wants, and yeah, a future agenda item for the housing trust to reconsider it and see where we're at is, I would think, totally appropriate.
Okay, Dean's hands up and then Katie?
Yeah, just a point of information and Shereen and Katie will, and you'll remember this. The upper floor of the hotel building, I think, had two potential either offices or sleeping rooms. And the academic research facility that has been talked about informally contemplated using the powerhouse across the street and perhaps housing some academics upstairs in the hotel building. So who would be involved in the research activities. There's sort of a job creation component of this whole idea as well. So I just, nothing's concrete at this point. But I just wanted to mention that that was an idea for the second floor since we've been talking about that just now.
Thank you. Katie?
Sure. And I just wanted to mention that the museum does have, I think, one or two offices on the second floor, but the rest of the second floor is vacant at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. You okay, Bruce?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Okay, Katie?
So if I, if I could just to go back to something that Corey said, later on in the memo, we do talk about, you know, we're, we're open to other ideas and suggestions. So if there's, you know, we don't want to say that these are the only town parcels that, you know, should be considered. So we wanted, you know, we want to have discussion about other ideas as well. So happy to hear those, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
The comment I was just going to make, and I wasn't, not exactly sure where it would fit into discussion tonight. Probably something we need to discuss at a later agenda. But just to kind of cover the concept of, you know, we have, there's different parcels or properties, housing that have had affordable housing deed restrictions on them and they've expired. And I think we need to kind of, you know, keep that on our radar, you know, what, what deed restrictions are expiring and what timeframe, steps that we can take to maybe secure them for future, you know, extensions. That's something that, I think we've had some brief discussions in the past on them. Really not part of this packet, but it's something that I think it's worth considering. Because I think we have the mechanisms that we could tackle those relatively easy and they would have a significant impact. So I think that's kind of the other items that I had in mind that we keep that in the mix of our actions.
Yeah, we get to something like that, Corey, not the next one, but the one after. It's, it kind of says affordable dwelling units mandatory by law. But before that, there's the accessory dwelling units by law. But it gets to your point there, if I recall, or am I missing it? Apartment? No, that's anyway, it's there. Yeah, we'll get, let me go back to Katie. Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, Megan had her hand up. Oh, I have Megan, Bruce, and then Katie. Sorry.
Just a quick question. So I had someone come to me who works with properties around town and does engineering, et cetera, who said that he doesn't know where to send people when they come to him with properties that could potentially go on the market as of, I don't even know what to say. But basically, people come to him and say, I might want this, to sell this to the town for affordable housing. I need a very succinct answer, you know, other than sending them to Katie, I guess. Is that the answer?
That would be my first one.
Yeah, I mean, mine too. I just want to make sure that that's right.
Now that I spoke for Katie.
Yeah.
Sure. No, that, that would be the appropriate avenue. I think that, again, we've issued the RFP for affordable and attainable housing again, so that we have some mechanism that we can utilize to continue to have these conversations. So yes, reaching out to me or to Ally would be the appropriate avenue at this point in time. And would be happy to take any, any, you know, any questions. And if it's appropriate, we'll certainly bring it forth to the trust.
Okay, Bruce?
Just that I think some elements of what Corey was talking about might be more appropriate in executive session. It could go in that direction.
Yeah, okay, I hear you. I see what you're saying. Katie?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, also down under policy discussions, we do have a, some information there of items that we've talked about in the past, and we can get to that. But that's specific to the, to potential buy downs for the chop houses once those restrictions are set to expire. So we'll get to that shortly. And I think that, I'm not sure if that's one of the items that Corey wanted to talk about. But we'll get to that in a, in a little bit. So if we're ready to move on with some zoning, potentially, I think Ally's going to take over that portion of the conversation. And we're available for questions as well.
Thank you. Okay, Ally?
All right. Thank you very much. So moving on to the second part of the memo, the protective zoning bylaw amendments, we're hoping to potentially take advantage of the new housing choice bill that's out. It requires a 50% majority vote at town meeting instead of the two thirds required for normal zoning. There's a little caveat on that. All of these potential zoning amendments that would go forward have to get approved by DHCD and also town council to see if they are eligible for this housing choice bill. So I just do want to put that caveat, but we believe that these could be eligible just with reading through the bill. So the first one is the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. As you all know, in 2019, annual town meeting did pass this bylaw. The, we went to the Community Housing Partnership with this same list. And they had discussed it at their, I think it was their December 8th meeting and made recommendations. One of their recommendations was to actually revise this bylaw and bring it to town meeting. They specifically noted that the bylaw could be revised to allow for non-year-round residents to create an ADU to rent out to year-round residents. So they thought that that would gain more applications. Currently, we've had three that have been approved through the special permit process. If you remember, we had two avenues. You could have it by right if you, if the AD was inside the building or if you were on a conforming lot or through a special permit if it was outside of the main structure or if the lot was non-conforming. So all of the applications that were received so far have been through the special permit process. So staff believes that additional revisions could be made to this bylaw to encourage more use of it. So that's the first one. Number two, affordable dwelling units mandatory. This is our version of an inclusionary zoning bylaw. It basically requires if a developer has 10 or more units in a development, at least 10% of all units have to be affordable. The bylaw does allow the developer to have a few situations that they could go with, basically, that does not allow or does not let the developer put the units into the actual development. They can do different options. So one of those options is to build an equivalent number of affordable units off-site to donate land that the planning board determines is suitable for development. And for non-rental properties, pay a fee in lieu of the actual units equal to three times the annual income of an income-eligible household. So basically, what we've had so far really is that buyout. So most developers choose that buyout, so the pay fee in lieu of, and it does go into Affordable Housing Trust. The most recent one was the Hunter Rice subdivision. And we've received a little over $200,000 for that buyout. This also bylaw does allow for density bonus to be granted by the planning board. However, town council has since advised us that we can't use this section of the bylaw because it doesn't allow for waiving of dimensional requirements. So if we were to revise this section, I would strongly suggest that we also revise that portion as well. So the Chatham Community Housing Partnership, when they did review this, they also recommended that this revision kind of go to the top of their recommendations. And they thought that, you know, having a buyout be more representative of the actual cost of housing unit in Chatham would be important. So staff believes that a revision to this bylaw may encourage affordable units to be created. The next one, apartments incidental to commercial or industrial use. So it's allowed in the general business in town and also in the industrial district in town. As long as the lot includes at least 10,000 square feet for each apartment and no more than four apartments per building in the GB district. And there is a few more caveats there. But staff does believe that if there was a revision to this bylaw, it could encourage additional housing units to be created. So multifamily, it's only allowed in the general business one zone, then the downtown area. And also in the residential 20A zone, that's in the Frostfish Hill area and Misty Meadow Lane, which is already developed. And in the remaining flexible development overly districts, there's not that many of them left in town. There was a petition at town meeting to remove almost all of them, but there are still a few. The zoning bylaw requires the development cannot contain more than eight bedrooms per acre of continuous buildable upland as well as other criteria. There's specific buffer, setback, street frontage, lot coverage. So staff believes that further revisions to this bylaw could be beneficial, perhaps allowing multifamily in all GB zones in additions to the dimensional requirements. Another one is small lot zoning. I think we have talked about this many times in the past. A example is the Nantucket Housing Needs Covenant Program. And in your staff report, it has a lot more detail about that. But basically, there's a lot of vacant parcels in town that could potentially be used for housing. But they just don't meet any of the dimensional requirements, so setbacks, things like that. If we could allow potentially for flexibility in that in return to have a deed restriction on, that could be something that could also gain housing units at town. We also did put an example of a bylaw from Dennis as well that allows that in here as an example. So there's two examples. There's one from Dennis and then also the Nantucket Housing Needs Program. And that is all I have. We'd be happy to go in with, to any more detail if you'd like.
Okay, Ally, let me start with, I'd like to make a couple, just a couple of comments first and then I'll open it up to everyone else. And we'll start with the accessory dwelling unit one. Yeah, you reminded me about the by right when it's inside the house. I, I remember reading, I was going to ask this to you beforehand, but I didn't get to it. But I, I thought in the, in the housing choice bill, there was some discussion about by rights for ADUs anywhere. Is that, or am I misrepresenting what it said? I, I remember that there was a lot of discussion at the state level on that in one way or another. I don't need an answer right now, but if you know it, that's fine.
I, I do believe that there is some discussion. I think they put in a definition of what an ADU was. And I think that that might have been the discussion around it, but I'd be happy to look into it more unless Katie, you have more information.
Sure. We can, we can certainly look into that. There were a lot of revisions to that bill. And so we'll have to confirm what was actually, what actually ended up being approved.
Okay, just a process point of view, looking at, okay, the, as we go through each of these, if you combine every one of those, you take a look at every one of them, those are hot buttons all the way down. At least they used to be, but before affordable, you know, we got into the real need for affordable and attainable housing. ADUs, the requirement, I mean, what they're saying here is something that we tried to do to begin with. You know, when we first started and we went through all the questions that we negotiated to try to get something fast. It's interesting, just from, make the comment, we've had the ADU around for a couple of years. We have three special permits. The hordes coming in from all over New England putting in ADUs hasn't occurred. I just thought I might mention that. The whole idea of what, what, how are you going to use ADUs? There's, there's a major push throughout the rest of the Cape saying that ADUs are a very good way, another, one of the, one of the things that we should do to push more ADUs because what we have are a lot of seniors and we have a lot of people that need affordable housing. And this is one way to make that happen. So anything we could do to make that happen is fine. I, I, when we talk about this, it's going to have to go to the planning board, right? Is this going to be sponsored by the housing trust or will it be sponsored housing trust and, and the Community Housing Partnership? How do you see that happening? You know, what planning board's doing with Chatham? This, I think, could be, if we could focus on a number of these, would be a good way to help with affordable housing. If we're moving ahead, what are you thinking about as far as timing? Would we try to get something done now or would we start the process and, and put it in for another year? Because I think all of these things that you're asking for are good things, but they're going to have to be, we're going to have to debate them. They're going to be an issue with some people. Is that?
I just didn't.
I guess, yes, there is, yep, start somewhere.
One of the things I wanted to mention was that the planning board had committed to looking at the ADU bylaw with, after a two-year time period. And I think that, I do, I do believe that there are members of the planning board that would like to revisit. I don't know that this needs to be sponsored by, by the trust. But I think perhaps a letter to the planning board to ask them to, you know, to try to make it a priority to look at revisions or potential revisions that we could bring before this upcoming town meeting would be beneficial. Again, ADUs are being targeted all over the Cape as, you know, the, probably the quickest way to create housing units, the needed housing units. And so, and again, it's private development. So it's not that, you know, the town doesn't necessarily have to, to fund any of this, you know, and the creation of these units. So it could be the quickest, quickest way. And again, it's private development. So I think that would be beneficial to maybe perhaps just make a recommendation to the planning board on that one.
Okay, let me get back to the trust. Dean's up first and Jeff?
Yeah, thank you. I understand that in Brewster, they have had multiple ADUs, I've been told that. And we've had just three. I favor something, some kind of reverberation here. I favor forwarding this to the, I'm okay with this, this first one. And I'm going to be okay with several others. There's only one that I have some concerns about. I favor sending this to the planning board in whatever fashion you get, staff thinks is best. And I think it could be. And I think it could be forwarded from the trust, sponsored by the trust, or whatever is the best approach, but I'm okay with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Peter, as am I. Okay with it. I think anything we can do to maybe foster more interest in developing ADUs is great, and if it's a non-resident that's doing it, so be it. We need housing units. So I'd be fully in favor of writing a letter to whoever we need to write to to say we would support revisiting the ADU and its revision by law. Thank you.
Thank you. Corey?
I'm going to make kind of a broader comment because I think we're on the same page. Basically, I support these going to the planning board, let them review them, you know, the ADUs along with the other items. I mean, apartments incidental to commercial industrial use, that jogged my memory from about 10 years ago. So we've gone down that road, and we can refresh that discussion certainly. And as Sluckman, the Castro man mentioned, I think the one that he he might have pause on is probably the same one I'm thinking of because I think the the small lot zoning one was going to create the most input from some potential opposition. But basically, in general, I would bring these to the planning board, let them flush out some public comments and concerns, and kind of go from there.
Corey, Megan?
Sorry, I turned off my camera because it speeds it up a little. I would definitely be in support of sending these to the planning board. I agree that the zoning one is going to create some interesting discussion. And with regard to the ADU one, again, I think we're here in a town with a double-edged sword, and people can afford million-dollar houses, don't want someone living in their backyard. And I think that we can't really compare ourselves to other towns with regard to the volume of ADUs, partially because the house prices are so much higher, and I just, I don't see a huge influx of second homeowners desiring this because it's not like it creates a more affordable situation for them. I mean, at that point, you're in a very affordable situation to begin with, but there's always hope, I suppose.
Yeah, and it's so, if it's family, that's a different story, and that happens. Okay, let's see. Shereen, sorry.
Yeah, I'm in favor of sending this all over to the planning board as well. One of the things that I see is maybe being written into whatever message we send to them is, when it comes to the apartments incidental to the commercial and industrial use, that we are looking for year-round rentals and somehow have that sort of designation that all of this that we are sending to them is about year-round, you know, rentals or year-round homes. And I agree, the small lot thing would be, is going to be controversial. However, it's something that's been recommended by the summer residence advisory committee, the CHAM 365 people brought it up. And I think it's something that could be duked out at the planning board and brought to town meeting and let the voters decide on whether that's something they want to see for Chatham. That's it.
Okay, Dean, your hand's up, or is that from before?
No, it's not from before. I put it up again because I didn't realize we were going to take these in lump fashion.
Go ahead. I didn't plan that either.
Because, I mean, I'm okay with the first four going to the planning board. I sense that there's probably a majority of of this board that wants to send all five to the planning board. I have a personal problem with the small lot zoning. I think it's, it would be a major transformation of the character and landscape of the town. I suspect there are a lot of people in town that are going to feel that way. So if there were, if there's going to be a vote on it, I would ask that wouldn't be voted on separately because I probably would vote no. But the rest of them, I have no problem with the planning board deal with it.
Okay, let me just make a couple of comments, on the rest of them, especially when it comes to, you know, affordable dwelling units, mandatory bylaw, the one that has to do with our developers. Correct, the last one has been up on Barn Hill Road. It's more, I thought it was four times 96,000, whatever. I thought it was closer to 300,000, but no matter what, you know, it just, it's too easy for, not only too easy, it's if a developer puts up 14 homes, he's not going to put an affordable house right next door, as much as you'd want to have something like that done. That's part of the issue. He can build somewhere else, but it's going to cost him a heck of a lot more. So if he spends $300,000, that's a piece of cake for him, and I'm exaggerating just a little bit. I don't see anything wrong with raising how much they provide to the trust up to what an affordable housing, something that's affordable would cost, and that's somewhere around $500,000 or something to that effect. I only think that's the appropriate thing to do, or the bylaw was written how many years ago when it made sense to do something like that? And we're in a whole different environment now. And so I think that's a no-brainer. You know, and I understand what Dean mentioned with the small lot zoning. If you have, although we get a lot, not a lot, we used to get quite a bit of that when you had the pre-existing non-conforming. How many big homes have you seen on small lots with hardly any setbacks? You know, there are quite a few of them in town because they're already on, you know, pre-existing non-conforming. But I would agree, get it to the planning board, and let's, let that, that's not pushing the button. That's where it should go, and there should be a public discussion on it. Jeffrey?
I just wanted to reinforce the notion, especially on number one with the ADUs, that that is only for year-round residents. It's extremely important that we emphasize that, and that's what we're doing this about. And then number five on the small lots, I really would like to hear the conversation. I was going to make the very, very point you just made, Peter, with respect to the, you know, we've allowed folks to build gigantic homes on smaller lots with special permits for, you know, and variances up the yin yang one, you know, they don't meet the variance conditions, and we allow them to be built. So why wouldn't we do that on a small lot? We have gigantic houses on small lots. Let's put a small house in a small lot, and let's make them affordable. So I would argue that we really, really need this, number five, and I'm really looking forward to hearing the conversation at the planning board. It'd be very interesting. Thank you.
I don't think there's a need for a vote yet. Dean mentioned that, but I I mean, the vote's got to, you got to put it out to the planning, I'm sorry, Dean, go ahead.
I mentioned it because I'm not in favor of sending number five to the planning board. Favor of it. So if there's to be a vote on the group, all five is a lump sum because I support the other four. But I would support it, but.
I just wanted to quickly say that if you did want to make a vote tonight, that is fine as well. We just wanted to put it out that this is a working session. We didn't want to add any pressure. It's a lot of information. So if you wanted to digest it and think about it, we would be happy to come back for another session of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to discuss this and make votes. But if you did want to make votes tonight, that is an option as well.
Okay. Shereen?
I know it's a lot to digest, but I think that we've had some, held some pretty strong opinions tonight. So I think that we could probably send along recommendations unless somebody says no, they want to reconsider it. It's a matter of efficiency and also urgency that we get this stuff done.
Do I have a motion? I guess general motion would be, could prove all how many there were proposed for the zoning.
Can we just start with four and then do five separately?
We can do that.
So I would, I mean.
That's fine. Who, was that Megan?
It was, yeah.
Okay.
I want me to just, I move that we pass our recommendation on items one through four through to the planning board, leaving item five for a separate vote.
I'll second it.
Second, any comments? I see Dean is looking.
No, no, I'm sorry. I didn't, no, I'm fine with that. My hands not up. I wasn't planning.
All right, Ellie, your hand is up. No?
It is up. I just wanted to also remind the board that there are other recommendations from the partnership. And also, we did provide a spreadsheet as well that talks about other zoning initiatives. And I just wanted to put that out there, that these are in the memo, things that staff recommend, but there are other additional zoning initiatives that are available as well. Not to add another layer to it, but I just did want to remind everyone.
Okay. We have this motion for the first four that were recommended by the staff. Any comments on that? Oh, I see Jill's hands up. I'm sorry, Jill, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair, did you want to add a caveat for year-round housing? I'm not sure if that was specific in how we presented it as staff.
Yes, definitely.
And I'm okay to amend my second to conclude that.
Thank you.
Please explain that. I'm sorry. I didn't catch what you were saying, Jill.
Oh, or go ahead, Shereen.
Yeah, so I think I brought it up, Dean, that to stress the idea that the initiatives would be encouraging year-round rentals and homes versus secondary, because we could get all the apartments we want, but all of a sudden now we have four summer res.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, let's start with the vote. Let me go around the other, let me start with, go the other way with Megan.
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Peter says aye. Okay, we need a, if we're going to proceed, a motion for number five, which is a small lot zoning.
I, Mr. Chair? I'll make that, I'll make that motion to recommend to the planning board the pursuit of small lot zoning as as memmoed in the, in what we received. I don't know. It sounds a little mushy, but I think you got it.
Get it. We have a second. Any discussion? I see Corey. Go ahead, Corey.
Yeah, no, I'm going to vote in favor of this. I do think, I do have some reluctance on it because some concern. But I'd be extremely interested in what kind of public input and what kind of efforts the planning board could get flushed out on some details of that, so that maybe there is elements of this that would be more palatable. But this one, this one's going to be a bit of a heavy task, I think, you know, working out all the details and the unforeseen consequences and stuff, but I think it's worth having a debate. So that's, yeah, that's it.
Thanks, Corey. Yeah, I would agree. You know, we tried this a little bit before, this is even before Katie, to try and do this. And it's, it depends on how you do frame it, you know. I won't go any more, but it's just a matter of how you do that, and we had a tough time trying to figure that out. But in case you might be smarter people than I am now. So, okay, any other discussion? Let's go for a vote. I'll start with Shereen.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
No.
Corey?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Peter says aye. Okay, let's go over to policy, unless anybody, unless you want to talk to what's in the spreadsheet. I looked at that, and I'm okay with what we have, to be honest. But it'd be, open it up to anybody else who wants to. No? Okay, let's talk policy. Katie, you're out.
So, so back to me. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So just a couple of items. Once the the restrictions on the remaining chop houses that have the old deed rider, I think we're looking at, I think, about five years before those restrictions expire. And it was suggested at a previous trust meeting that we look to see whether or not we could actually buy down restrictions now and offer some sort of financial incentive to the property owners to keep the properties affordable. So we did reach out to DHCD actually a few different times, just to continue to clarify, because we wanted to make sure that it wasn't an option. And they did tell us that we, the only time that we could do something like that is at the time of sale. And so our thought at this point in time is if the trust wants to pursue something like that, that we look to set funds or, you know, perhaps over the next few years, that we look to set a certain amount of funds aside for the properties as they come up for sale, and that way there, we could potentially do a buy-down program at that time. And so basically, what it would come down to is the, the property owner would be able to sell their property for more than what it would require under the affordable restriction. But, or they would sell it for the amount, let me make sure I get this right. So they would sell it for the amount that would, it would be affordable for another person, but we, the the trust would actually be contributing so that the property owner would actually get a higher amount of money, but the property would then remain affordable. At that point in time, the universal deed rider, which would be in perpetuity, would be placed on the parcel. So I'm not sure if I explained that, and let me just ask Ellie if she has anything further to add on that, but I just wanted to open it up for any questions, just in case I didn't explain it appropriately.
Ellie?
No, I think that that was perfect. I think it's important, obviously, to go to the universal deed rider for these units that we have, because there's no longer, they no longer would have the 40-year restriction.
Yeah, and the reason they had a 40-year restriction is that was what the law said at the time.
That's correct.
Okay, let's see. I see Bruce has his hand up. This is what he is, Bruce, from last year.
Right. I'm puzzled by the restriction that can only be done at sale because I know in Yarmouth, the gentleman who's done this is actually a friend of mine, has bought houses, put a a permanent restriction on the deed, converting them into rentals, not homeownership, and has received a check from the town of Yarmouth. I think in the vicinity of $75,000 per unit that he's done this with. And he's done it, I believe, more than 10 times.
Katie or Ellie?
I just had a quick question for Bruce. After he received the money from Yarmouth, did he sell the property?
No, he's kept, well, with one exception, he had a bad tenant, and he did sell one unit, and the rider survived the sale. But it was never his intention to sell them. It's basically, it's his retirement idea, that he buys a house for $75,000 less than you or I could buy it for and rents it at the state affordable rate. And so far, he claims he's making money.
We can, of course, contact Yarmouth and see what that program is.
And if you want to talk with the guy who's doing it, I can give you his name and phone number.
That would be great. Thank you, Bruce.
Okay, I see Megan's hand up.
So I, I think that doing this as described by Katie is fine in the houses that already exist or that were part of the original chop houses. My concern with our doing it this way and explaining it this way at any sort of town meeting or, you know, beyond is that we then essentially could do this with any house in town. And my concern with that is that we have, say we're able to successfully create affordable housing, but attainable housing remains a challenge for us especially. Or even if we can create both. If we do this, we're essentially taking houses that are potential year-round, small family homes, because they're the only thing that's even going to be remotely close enough for us to buy, if that makes any sense, and taking them out of the free market. I get it, we're the chop houses. We want to put this, you know, universal deed rider on them because that was what should have been there in the first place, but I just, I see it as sort of a slippery slope because we can't. Does anybody else see where I'm going with this?
My only question is, does it, well, I see Katie's hand up. Maybe I should let her speak first.
Sure, the intent isn't to do this for other parcels. The intent is to keep the parcels that were meant to be affordable, affordable. So we're specifically top talking about, I think there's 17 houses.
Yeah, no, and I I totally understand that. I just think that we I think first and foremost, we need to admit that we failed as a town in that regard. We can fix it. We can try to fix it, but we we did. I mean, we failed there. And I think that we need to be careful telling this story and doing it this way because we're not actually eligible to just give them a financial incentive to to put it back in the program. We're buying it at market rate and putting a house into the program that is coming out of mark that that should be market rate. Does that make sense? And I'm a little nervous about that.
Well, the editorial in the paper said what we're doing is not keeping, you know, chop houses around. We're allowing them then to be sold and and taking them out of the affordable range. But I'm not I'm not arguing with you. I'm just trying to figure out what Katie, your hand's still up.
Yeah, I'd I'd actually just because we did a lot of research on this and and because, you know, we were concerned about, you know, the properties that had fallen out of the program. And what we learned is that it wasn't that the town that failed. It was the program was so new 40 years ago. And there was no they didn't realize that, you know, that this 40 year restriction. And it wasn't just in Chatham. So it was all across the state. It was all all of the HOP program. So we have the Chatham Housing Opportunity Program, but there are HOP programs across the state and they're all facing the same issues. And so I just want to say like the town didn't fail. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't a failure. It was a program that was put together. And, you know, they didn't have all the safeguards in place through the town or through the state requirements. And so again, now that we know that, being able to then move forward to put the universal deed rider on these properties in the future is our goal. We've been able to do it, I think, with four or five of the properties at this point in time as they've sold because they've sold before the restriction runs out. So our idea would, you know, the thought is that we would put money aside because a lot of the restrictions are going to run out right around the same time. And we just want to be able to act on those properties as that comes up so that we maintain these properties within our affordable housing inventory. So I just want to make sure.
I guess my other question then would be, are these the best properties to do it with? Because ultimately, if we have to buy a property at market value to be able to do this, are these the best properties to do it with? Or are there other properties that are going to come up in town that potentially we would be better off buying and putting a universal rider on?
Sure, we wouldn't actually be buying the property at market rate. What what we would be doing is putting money towards the this. So say the property was going to sell for 500,000 and a person was going to come in and purchase it for 300,000. We would actually dedicate about $200,000 towards the sale of that property so that the property owner would then be willing to put the universal deed rider on it. So it's 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 actually, you know, buying down the price of the property. So we wouldn't actually be responsible for the entire amount of the sale. And so we would just be contributing.
Well, yeah, but essentially we could do that anywhere. That's my point. I mean, my house, for instance, I live in what would in a chop house essentially. Not one of those, but you know. And so in theory, you could come to me and say, well, yeah, we know your house on the open market would probably sell for 600, but we're willing to give you three to if you'll put this rider, you know what I mean? That's what I'm saying. Like, maybe these aren't the best case scenario. Maybe there are houses that would cost us less to buy down the nut. That's all. Because since we have to do it anyway. I don't know. Just interesting.
Sure. It I mean, that's something that we could look look into as well. I mean, would we would have to reach back out to DHCD and see if that would be something that would be allowed? But, you know, this is again, this could be one of those programs that we're looking further into this. This could be a further conversation down the road. It doesn't necessarily need to be decisions made tonight. You know, we're happy to go and do more research.
See what DHCD or whatever the what if that's allowed on every house? Because maybe we do it on these and some more, or maybe we don't do it at all. But I'm just interested to see that how that works and if it's an option on anything.
Okay, let me let me quick Jeff and we have and Shereen. My only concern is, you know, not concerned, but to keep one house up or two or three or four or whatever it is, and we put a certain amount of money to it. I'm not saying don't do it. That's that's one day ones and twosies and and that to keep those that are like that, that's that's good. That's okay. But to take $500,000, let's say for one house, when you could put maybe four or five someplace else, you know, it's and it's all circumstantial. There's no simple answer right now. And you may be right. Maybe we continue on. But let me let's go to Jeff and then Shereen.
Yeah, I would suggest that this this one needs a little further study. Number one, it's a hard explain. Number two, I echo Peter's most recent comment that perhaps we're not getting bang for our buck, not knowing frankly, what kind of bucks we're talking about. I don't know what the what the amount we'd be expected to come up with and how many times we be we would be expected to come up with it. So I'm a little, you know, I'm not gung ho in this one. I need more information. I need to know overall costs. I get the concept, I think, that we'd be helping to buy it down so that we could have this restricted deed rider in perpetuity. The houses are already 40 years old. So we're we're putting money into another 40 years, are we? I mean, so I I have some concerns on this one. I just have I have other questions and I really I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think we continue with conversation. But I I have I have more concerns than I do, you know, support right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Shereen.
So this kind of program, I think instead, I think, just not looking at the chop houses, but looking at an overreaching program like this. This this is the kind of program where there's a lot of education and explanations behind it. I mean, pretty much you would probably be targeting the buyer to say, find a house where you can do this. And we'll, you know, and then apply for support to be able to achieve that goal. That, to me, sounds more effective than let's designate just to the chop houses. I would include the chop houses in that program, but I would create the program to look like that. And we would have to really look at it as earmarking X amount of money and re generating those funds every year. Let's say we because home values are growing crazily in this town. And, you know, what would have been a $500,000 house now is probably not that doesn't even exist in Chatham, I doubt, right now. So I would say that, yes, to pursue the chop house buy down but as an inclusion to a bigger bigger program that would allow the buyer to pursue something. And and maybe it's designating. How many houses were there, Katie, in that program? 10?
34 originally. I think there are 21 left that have due restriction on them. And I think that there's 17 that are going to expire at a point probably over the next five years.
Okay, within it. So maybe that's how we frame it up that, you know, knowing that the education is around the chop houses and the dilemma there. But to say, well, if you can find a home outside of the chops that is, you know, then then let's pursue it that way. I would say I agree with Jeff. This is going to take some thought and consideration, but that would be the direction I would go with this program.
Thank you, Shereen. Katie's.
Sorry, I just hadn't taken it down.
Okay, I saw Dean's hand up before, but it's not there. So let's see. Anything more on this one? This is more study, more discussion, more looked at. Okay.
Sure, thank you. And again, we just wanted to give that update that that we, you know, we have looking had looked into it as Bruce requested. And we'll look into what Yarmouth has to say, and then we'll look into other potential buy down programs overall and see if we can come up with something and come back with that. So the other item that we're, you know, just to talk about from a policy decision is I know that the select board has discussed considering recommending the hotel motel tax from 4% to 6%. And so just a thought that if if that were the case, that perhaps that, you know, that that 2% could be dedicated to, you know, affordable or attainable housing. And so just to we just wanted to put that out there as something to consider as you move as those discussions move forward.
Okay, Dean and then Jeff. Go ahead, Dean. You're on mute.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I I did advocate at the select board that we consider raising this from 4% to 6%. We'll have to have that conversation in the context of the various stakeholders, including the the hotel and in owners and in the in the town. But I I think it's worth considering very seriously. I don't favor allocating the entire 2% to housing. I think there is an advantage in taking some of this money for housing because we can use it for attainable housing as well as affordable housing. But I've I've said of the two points that the increase would be, I would I would allocate one point to housing. I would allocate a half a point to education, specifically the Chatham Elementary School. Because we're going to we're facing an annual contribution starting next year of $600,000 to keep that elementary school going and with with Chatham running it. And I would take the other half percent and put that into the general revenues. That's how I feel about the increase. So I am supportive of an increase, but I I'd like to allocate it differently. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Jeff?
Yeah, I'm supportive of the increase as well. How we allocate it out is a subject to some further discussion, but I'm I'm supportive of the increase. I think it's time, certainly affordable. And attainable housing will be part of it, whether it's 2%, 1%, I don't know. But I think this perhaps more promises a permanent funding source for affordable attainable housing than our transfer fee legislation. Perhaps even has more promise than that. So I'm I'm pretty gung ho on this one for affordable attainable. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Corey.
I want to be cautious how I say this, but it comes out the right way. I expect this to move forward. I expect it to pass. I am not overly thrilled with adding another additional tax to the to the population, even though the causes that have been suggested are completely worth putting funds to. I do think on the downside of something like this, it's going to be the it's going to be the breakpoint of certain families and individuals that may have used accommodations in the past that this is just the point that just there is going to enough's enough. These accommodations will be filled. There's a there's a demand for Chatham. And we've got a population that can afford to come and stay at these hotels and motels or whatever. But I think some families and that have used them for, you know, some generations and whatever. I think they're going to finally reach a breakpoint that and this could be it. Maybe it's not. Maybe it's already been breached. So I'm not thrilled with raising more taxes, but I do expect this thing to pass.
Thank you, Corey. Shereen.
I I can imagine, you know, Corey, I know your family's been in the rental business for a while. But I I'm assuming that prices and costs of of staying here and in accommodations will probably have have increased as well. I I'm just I'm in favor of pursuing the conversation here. I'd like to see more opportunity to generate revenue for attainable housing as well as the affordable. So, yes, let's continue the conversation.
Thanks, Shereen. Bruce?
I don't think that it's going to be the the straw that keeps people away. I think what what the price that is set is largely what the market will bear. So if, and obviously this is no longer a valid number, if a room rents for $100 a night and at 110 it goes empty, the the renter, the the landlord cuts the price back to 100, whether or not he gets to keep 100 of that or 94 cents, $94 of that. The price is not set by us adding a tax on to it. At some point, we could add so much tax on it that it isn't worth the while of the landlord to rent it. He might want to sell it and take his money. But I I don't think the I think we're taking it out of the landlord's pocket more than the renter's pocket, which is another discussion. That's all.
Okay, thanks, Bruce. Before I go to Dean, I'm going to make a comment. I'm I'm for that the increasing, you know, the and I and I I'm reluctant to go full 2% for all affordable attainable housing. Many affordable and attainable. The issue we still have is for the state to agree that really affordable and attainable are all affordable. And and our trust ought to be able to handle all of it. But we're not at that position right now. And if we're going to have to buy something and and we really need attainable housing, it's got to come out of free cash or something else like that. Is, you know, the question is, is the state going to approve it? I didn't get a warm fuzzy listening to, you know, at the at our at our selectman meeting across the Cape where we had some of our elected state officials come in and they they were very, you know, supportive and whatever. But but at the same time, they they were reluctant to really say that, okay, you can go to 200%. So I I think that's still an argument that we're going to have to deal with. That's just one thing. And then they they refer to this taxes. They 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 comment that towns should have trusts, just like we have. And they should have a trust fund. And and that really all you're doing is using other people's money. In other words, the people that come in and rent, you know, they're they're paying, they keep on paying a higher premium. But at the same time, I think both Bruce and Corey make good, you know, that's a that's a that's a business case model you you sit there and argue about. In any case, let's see. Shereen had her hand up again. Still Shereen? No? Nope.
Sorry.
That's okay. And Bruce, you you still? No? Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, did that give you enough? Well, we should pursue it. And and we are going to have to make that discussion over go through that discussion at during the budget process. Katie, anything else?
Sure. One more thing before we move to the executive session. Mr. Chairman and members of the trust, I just want to call your attention to the memo that was provided from the Chatham Community Housing Partnership. And part of the reason we wanted to include this in this discussion is because they voted to make recommendations to the trust that, you know, many which were votes that you took tonight. There are some items here that are more appropriate appropriate for the select board alone to take up. And so I think that what we will end up doing is forwarding this memo to the select board as well. But I just wanted to check with Allie to see if there was anything in particular that you wanted to go through from this memo specific to the trust. I I think that they covered. I think everything was covered that was appropriate for tonight. So I just wanted to make just check with you having. I know that you had worked with them on on this.
Thank you, Katie. No, I agree with you. I think that we went through a lot of what was in our staff memo as well. So I I feel comfortable moving on.
So again, we'll we'll forward this to the to for you to be included in a select board agenda in the future for the other items that they're recommending. And before there's we move to go into executive session, I just want to let everybody know that Shawna recently forwarded a link for that executive session. So we would adjourn from this meeting and move into that other meeting. So it would be a separate link.
Okay, Katie and Allie, you going to come back in January? You said you think so?
That was our thought. I mean, I think that we've got some good information to move forward with tonight. But I do think that we'll, you know, perhaps if, you know, since we we did get some good information, we'll move maybe more towards the middle of January to come back and have another conversation and ask for a scheduling of another Affordable Housing Trust meeting.
Okay, good. Yeah, we yeah, we should. We have to keep the pressure on us as well as, you know, getting something out there for the public to. Okay.
Mr. Chair. Before we adjourn, I just wanted to thank Allie and Katie for putting this together. I think this packet was really, you know, sort of encompassed a lot of the philosophy and the policies we've really been talking about for for the last few years. So I really appreciate you, both of you advancing this forward for the trust to to discuss tonight.
Yeah, and I would, I would echo that as well, if I might jump in. You did a great job. The package was, was tight, was, was very well done. And you teed up a lot of the issues that we've been batting around for quite a while here. So I really appreciate it. And hopefully we'll get some, some momentum going here. But thank you.
Good. Okay, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Dean?
I move that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees go into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23B, Number 6, to consider the purchase exchange taking lease or value of real property, parenthesis private property acquisition for affordable slash attainable housing. If such discussion may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the governmental body with no return to open session.
Thank you, Dean.
I'll second.
Second. Okay, any discussion? No, let's go with the vote. Start with Corey.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Peter says aye. Thank you, everyone. Good meeting. Good night, Chatham. We'll see you in executive session.